Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Welcome back Suzanne.
Thank you Mayor Levy.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir. Mayor Levy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Swinier?
Here.
Councilmember Sawyer?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome back to you too Noel. Okay, if everyone will stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to a republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're on agenda item number three and Suzanne, we're gonna appoint someone to the park and rec advisory board.
That's right. Thank you Mayor Levy. This evening, as council knows, we had openings in the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. There's currently three openings. We sent letters out to all of the incumbents and advertised as per council's policy on Channel 10 and the website, and we have three applicants that have applied for the three openings. Two of them are incumbents, Mr. Bill Sinclair and Mr. Gene Mertlik, and then we have a new applicant and her name is Dana Weber. All three are present with us this evening in the audience for questions and I am prepared after council approval to swear them in.
Well, that sounds great. We thank everybody for their applications and especially the incumbents. Thank you. You must enjoy what you're doing. Council, do you want to query the three applicants? Or are you good with a motion to approve the three that we have?
I'd like to hear from the new person.
Sounds good.
It's Dana Weber.
Weber, okay.
And Ms. Weber's right there.
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome. Would you come to the podium and just give us your name and address Ms. Weber and we will start this process. Thank you for being here.
My name is Dana Weber.
Your address?
My address is 455 Oxford Lane in Woodland Park.
Great. Why don't you just start and tell us in short how long you've been around and why you're in this position today?
I moved to Woodland Park in 2010 and was recruited to play pickleball in around 2005. And because of my connection to pickleball, I learned all of the things that the Parks and Rec are doing and that I want to be a part of that.
That's great. That's great. Mr. Carr, do you have a question for Ms. Weber?
Yes, thank you for volunteering. I'm the council liaison to the Parks and Rec Board, so it's always welcome to have fresh perspectives and insights. You've been in the community for...
Seven. Seven.
Oh, I'm looking at Gene, so I see. Is this your first volunteer activity for the city commission?
As far as the city goes, yes. But I have other volunteer activities including Pike's Peak Regional Hospital.
Let me ask, are you due over there as a volunteer?
I don't do anything now. I'm a retired director of volunteers.
Okay, okay.
Anybody else? Council John?
Dana is a neighbor of mine and she's been very active in another organization here I know, the Utes Best Social Club, and continues to lead a lot of activities there, so I'm happy she's looking for some other things to do.
Sounds like a great addition. Sounds good. There you go. There you go. Well, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you Mayor Levy.
You bet. I'm seeing Bill laugh at me and Gene. Do you all have any, anything to report? Do you want to come in before we take a vote? You may if you'd like. There's no need to.
But you got all dressed up and you know, nowhere to go.
Alright, sounds good. Council, just looking for a motion to approve the three candidates.
Motion to approve three candidates for the three positions.
Thank you Suzanne.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Swinier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all. Thank you for your service and Dana, welcome aboard. Is it Dana or Dana?
It's Dana.
Dana, welcome. Thank you very, very much.
If I can have the three of you join me up here at the podium, we'll get you all officially sworn in. I'll have you face, I know that Travis is trying to get this on camera, so if you could face that way. And if you just raise your hand and look up to this audience, then please state your name. Dana Weber, thank you. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Colorado with charter and ordinances and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, the duties of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you and congratulations, and I'll have you sign your own papers. This is Jason. You're very happy to be here. So Mr. Sinclair, you can sign yours. Mr. Mertlik, this is yours. Sally Riley, this is yours.
Dana's husband's name is Dan. Took me about a year to figure that out. Dana, Dana.
You take, I'll keep, you keep that one there. That's for your record, yes ma'am? Yes, please. And you keep that one.
Oh really?
We're all, thank you. Do you remember the incident where your job got out?
Thanks, Jean.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
I remember that Bill.
Okay, we move on to agenda item 3B and I guess Rick's gonna come up and talk about the best of Teller County awards. Come on up. Welcome.
Hi Council, how you doing? Rick Langenberg, The Mountain Jackpot Newspaper. Sometimes in the past, people have had the perception we've been overly critical of the city at certain times. So now we put on a different hat and we also like to praise the city when they do very good things. So we recently had a best of Teller County like survey, which we've been doing actually for about, actually about 20 years, but the last two years we kind of opened it up more to more, to the northern part of the county also. And we had, this year we had like a record turnout participation. We had between 5,000 and 10,000 ballots submitted. So it was pretty, it was pretty intense competition. And I'd just like to recognize some of the top awards that really benefited the city. And, and one of them is the, for the best public servant. And this one we had probably, this was, had probably the record amount of nominations. And we just want to recognize Darlene Jensen from the Main Street program. And she actually finished, she finished second.
Who finished second? Rick, I didn't hear what you said. Who finished second?
Darlene, Darlene.
Darlene, listen, we've done very much.
Sure.
It's been a pleasure. We've seen you.
Okay, congratulations.
This also needs to go out to the many volunteers with the Woodland Park Main Street. Last quarter alone, we clocked an equivalent value just for the first quarter 2017 of over $18,000 in volunteer service hours. The state provides $23 value, excuse me, for every volunteer hour served for nonprofits. And why that figure's important is when you move forward to apply for grants, they look at the volunteer hours and the equivalent dollars for those hours. So I want to thank all of the volunteers with Woodland Park Main Street as well. Thank you really.
Darlene, congratulations.
And next, there was several events and also we had a lot of competition for, for events in this best of contest. And without question, the number one event for best area-wide event, and this was throughout the whole region, and I know this has got a lot of discussion here at the council chambers, was Cruise Above the Clouds.
I'm just accepting.
I know you spoke very passionately about it.
We're proud to have it. It is a great event. I always say I've never at the event till I became the mayor. And I think it's one of the great events to the community, so thanks very much.
It was one overwhelming.
Yeah, I will pass this along.
Okay, okay, great, okay. And actually in second place on that same category, and I know the cities worked real hard on this event, was Fourth of July Celebration. So I don't know who I should, is there anyone who would accept this? Alright, that's about, that's about all I have. There was a lot of other individual awards too for businesses and stuff like that. I'll probably give them to some of you individually on those. But, but look for it next year because we're, we're continuing this. This is becoming a very big competition and it's a good way of really honoring a lot, a lot of businesses and individuals and different, different events and nonprofits in the area. But thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no additions, deletions, or corrections tonight, so we move on to the consent calendar. Suzanne, you want to take these one at a time?
Sure Mayor Levy. This evening on tonight's consent calendar, we have the approval of the minutes from the last council meeting, the April 6 council meeting. We have the approval of the March 2017 statement of expenditures, and we have the approval of the construction contract with A1 chip seal in the amount of $401,175.72 for the chip seal resurfacing of the city streets in 2017.
Thank you. Council, questions? If not, we'll just call for, I'm sorry, I'm sorry Paul.
Do we have competitive bidding on the zip seal?
We have in the past. This was a contract that was negotiated a couple of years ago, but we did do competitive bids, I think two years ago. And we had, we awarded multiple years depending on what level of work needed to be done, so we locked in some great prices. There are only a couple of companies in Colorado that do chip seal. AA has, or A1 Chip Seal has done a phenomenal job for us in the past. They've been extremely responsive to things such as chip windshields and notifying the different areas and when the work's gonna be done. So yes, to answer your question, it was competitively bid, not this contract, but last year for a much larger scope.
But it was competitively bid and bid out for a couple of years.
Yes, sir.
Is this the last year of that?
I don't, I don't recall the answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
Noel?
Is this the total for the year, pretty much, or is this exactly for the year? The $401?
Please re-
The amount that's shown here is for an entire year?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It's the annual pavement management plan execution for one year.
Right, okay. It mentions the contract form was reviewed by a city attorney. I assume it was also reviewed by Public Works people who-
Absolutely.
Anybody else wishing to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval of the consent calendar, items A, B, and C as presented.
Second. Thank you. Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Swinier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you Suzanne. We have no unfinished business tonight, no ordinances on initial posting, so we have one ordinance on public hearing and it's ordinance number 1305. Suzanne, would you like to lead us?
Sure, would I?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and recuse myself from this vote.
Okay.
I know I wa, I did vote on the DDA for this to come to council, so I don't want to do a double vote, I think. And I also wasn't here for the initial posting, but I've also recused myself at that time too.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Would you like me to step out or can I just sit?
We would and we will, Mr. Butler or somebody will show you the way. Where will you be so we can find you? Okay. Shouldn't be long.
Thank you Council. As you may recall, last council meeting Sally Riley introduced this to you and I am here just to go over the basics of it and if there are any questions, David and Sally are here to help answer them. But this is to consider the inclusion of property in the Woodland Park Downtown DDA Authority District as requested by Mr. Kuiper. It's Lot 3, the Paradise Lodge Marketplace subdivision in Woodland Park. And all of you have the map that shows the part on the map of the inclusion. And there's maps back there for the audience as well, so you know, you can see it on the map. At its regular meeting on March 7, the DDA voted unanimously to recommend the city count, to the city council, the inclusion of this property listed above into the DDA boundary area. The petition for inclusion is a voluntary request by Mr. Kuiper, the owner of the property. It's authorized under section 3125-822 of the Colorado Revised Statutes. Mr. Kuiper has petitioned the DDA to expand the current DDA boundary to include Lot 3, Paradise Lodge Marketplace. The present owner of Lot 3 and party requesting inclusion is Parvest LLC, Mr. Pete Kuiper. Said property is 53,548 square feet or 1.23 acres. Mr. Kuiper believes that including Lot 3 in the DDA will enable comprehensive planning with Lot 4, which is already in the boundary. Mr. Kuiper believes this is a very natural extension that will allow any potential user to more effectively design a project that benefits and enhances the community. In your attachments are the ordinance, the DDA boundary map, and Mr. Kuiper's correspondence with the DDA and city.
Thank you Suzanne. Council, questions before we go to the public? For Sally or Suzanne or, I see Ed Beaumont's here possibly to speak also. Go ahead.
We've done our due diligence. We don't inherit any problems with this property, no brownfields or anything like that or surprises.
None that we're aware of.
Okay, thank you.
No, we can make it easy. Call for a motion to approve ordinance 1305.
When you're public.
I'm sorry, we do. Said that, but we didn't get to. Would anybody like to speak on this issue? Okay, then we'll move forward. You want to lead us Kim?
Yeah, I would move for approval of ordinance 1305 as presented.
Thank you.
My second.
There you go Suzanne.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Swinier?
Yes.
Sawyer? Oh, pardon me. Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you Suzanne. Okay, move on to new business and Suzanne, where are you going with this?
Thank you Mayor Levy. This evening, the city clerk's office comes to council with a request to streamline the process of permission to serve alcohol in Memorial Park. As council knows, on several occasions, we've had Bleed Hockey has come to council and asked for alcohol in Meadowwood Park. And this, in our charter and state statute, excuse me, in our charter, I have, we have to bring that before the council. The council has to approve that. And we've done that. But now with Memorial Park looking so beautiful, we have seven events that are planned for the park that people have requested to have alcohol at. And they incorporate homeowners association picnics, we have a 90th birthday party celebration, and we have some weddings. So these seven events have petitioned to the clerk's office to have alcohol in the park. And typically, I would have to bring each one to council and individually you would have to approve each one. What the city clerk's office is proposing is that the council allow, the city clerk's office to approve these individual applications for Memorial Park. Are there any questions I can answer?
I would just like to start by asking the chief thoughts. Clearly, we had this in place for a reason.
We have not had any issues for any of the events in quite some years, so I do not have any issues with this request.
I can just imagine, as everybody can and hope, that that park is utilized to its fullest and I can imagine a lot of parties, weddings with people drinking and how are we gonna manage that? That's gonna be different than we've ever had before, so that's the first thing that comes to my mind.
Sure, I'll start with the whole process before a person even would get to the point of asking for permission in the park is they apply to Parks and Recreation to rent the facility and there's a process that they have to go to through and it's very stringent. There's lots of different things they have to do. Then they would come to the clerk's office and Chrissy and I have created an application process that they would apply for with the clerk's office where they'll, they'll be telling us what kind of alcohol they're serving. Is it just wine and beer? Is it mixed drinks? What's that going to look like? Also, they'll be telling us what kind of food they'll be serving because that's very important, that if there's alcohol, that there's food. We're, we're gonna also put the responsibility on them to tell us how they're going to control the alcohol and how they're gonna prevent minors for, from being served during the event and how will we make sure the alcohol stays in the designated area. And so I've spoken with some of the applicants already and they have different ideas like stamping people's hands that are over age, over 18, 21, yeah, 18. 21, excuse me. I was 18 when I was a kid. And stamping, they have bracelets, they have other people that, you know, other adults that will monitor it. And it'll be our responsibility if council approves to go through that process with each applicant individually.
You've been to many events here in town, Oktoberfest, Vino Notes, where there are those control mechanisms in place. Those will be required, so this isn't carte blanche for large, loud parties. It would just be an ability to approve these without your involvement. If you want to stay involved, that's fine, but we have so many events that are coming up. We thought this would be a benefit to the council and to the applicants to streamline this process.
Okay. Is this the approval tonight? Is it just for this group or for future as well?
It's not actually even for this group. It's just to allow the clerk's office to do this process and then we would start the approval process of the individual applicants.
Okay, and the only other question is chief, are you, how's the police department look at this? Are you okay with this?
Using a lot of our previous events that we do, they're usually a non-event and typical duty officers are able to handle them. If it looks like it's gonna be a large event, I'll bring in reserve or have an officer stay over. We do have grant money for DUI enforcement, so more than likely I'd pull an officer in on that kind of funding, so it wouldn't impact my actual budget.
If you bring somebody in, is there extra cost for that and does the applicant incur that or is that a city expense?
We would be paying it off of a grant more than likely, so it would not impact our budget. So we have about 12 grand that we could use for that.
There, there's not a need for an officer to be there.
I understand.
Okay.
But I just, if there's a problem or something, or there's a big group, like you said, you may want somebody in the area.
So my understanding is this is a procedural suggestion to quicken the process and not have us involved. What I would ask is if it gets approved by council, is that we get a summary thing at some point so we can kind of put it in the public record at council?
That I, that would be very easy to do.
Thank you.
Go.
Is there a requirement for any of the applicants to be, to qualify? Is it, if we have a private party?
That is not a requirement, not for the private parties.
And the one related to this, this action, what are we gonna be charging folks to use Memorial Park for these kinds of events?
I don't know.
And I don't recall that off the top-
Someone else?
My expert left already.
The Prab worked on that and Cindy has, there's different ranges for whether you're renting the picnic shelter or three picnic shelters or the entire park. Just to note though, if you do rent the entire park, you, you can't include the playground. We didn't think it was appropriate to not let the public enjoy the playground, even if there's an event. But I, I can, we can, I can get you that list if you're interested.
I have these lists.
And each outlet's charged, there's all, there's like 50 charges or something.
Carol actually asked the question. I was looking to look for a fee structure. And if there is one, will that come to council on a vote or that will stay with Park and Rec? Or how would that be determined?
It will be determined just as other fees except for enterprise funds are done at the staff and operational level.
Just a thought, are we going to, fees are gonna be for all parties, even nonprofits?
There's a different structure. As Councilman Carr mentioned, there's, there's tiers for whether you're in city, out of city, profit, nonprofit. So there's four columns and 13 rows, a matrix of the fees.
And that'll be coming to us once it's, or-
Yeah, it's, it's final-ish at this point, but I don't know if they're planning to bring it to council, but I have the information, obviously David has it and-
Just as we do fee structures for other park and rec activities, the council's not involved with those. You are involved with setting the fees for the enterprise fund, water rates, those types of things. But this was done after a survey of like facilities and like communities to see what, what served the community well. What I can tell you is most of the rental fees are still extremely reasonable. They're the, it's the best deal in town for this type of space, which is why it's booking up pretty quickly.
We had fees prior with the old gazebo and-
We did. It wasn't as, there wasn't quite as much of a matrix as we have now, but there's always been the opportunity to rent different parts of the park. I couldn't tell you if it was for the gazebo specifically, but there's always been an opportunity to rent different parts of some of the facilities.
Okay. John?
Is there a limitation on the alcoholic content of drinks? I thought I heard Suzanne say mixed drinks.
We, we will be, it would be at the discretion of the applicants and in our application, they will let us know what they're serving, whether it's beer, wine, or wine coolers.
Yeah. Margarita for example.
Margaritas, yes.
Yeah, so they will be allowed?
Yes.
So 3.2% is not a limitation on alcohol, alright? Go ahead. It's just a simple question. Our insurance, we have insurance coverage, especially with the water and the embankment. One thing, is there any thought to if someone should fall into the lake and pier or needing assistance because they don't know how to swim? Would we have any, like a life preserver or anything to assist?
We're looking at if we should have hooks or things that are near the pier with- which is the most, if you want to call it dangerous place, but the water depth there is, is, goes from toe depth to maybe knee to thigh depth at the most, and that's twenty feet out. The depth of the pond isn't twelve feet, except for really right near the middle. So if you fell in, more than likely, you're going to just be able to stand up and walk out.
Okay, so.
Unless you're drunk.
Well, that's, that's what I would get at, but I didn't want to, just so that they just don't plunge into deep water.
Correct.
Anybody else, any other questions? Snap, David, do you have any thoughts on this, if you like it?
Well, I do, only because it does, and it, it might help streamline the process with the applicants as well. That's what always appeals to us. We've, I can't recall council ever refusing one of these, but Suzanne and her office really scrutinizes it and holds people accountable. The police department patrols when these things are occurring. The seven was just to give you an order of magnitude of the things that are coming, it wasn't limited for this, but your permission tonight would allow that to become an administrative function.
Just clarification, this is just for Memorial Park?
Not necessarily. Or is this one just?
This one is just for Memorial Park.
Okay, good.
The only other times we've had requests were for Meadowwood, and we still would like to bring those to you. This is just Meadowwood Park, because as City Manager Butterie said, Memorial Park, there's so many of them coming in now.
Well, movie on the green, things like that, Oktoberfest, those still come here.
Those are special event liquor licenses, they fall under a different category.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we to take this to a motion, or?
We will.
If, if we do, could I have my little caveat added, that we get a report after the fact?
Of course.
Oh, just a summary, just so we have it.
They already said that, yeah. And my, and my only concern, Suzanne, and I know you guys will manage this well, I am a firm believer in that park. I think it's going to be utilized greater than we even imagine. And there's going to be some crazy people wanting to have weddings there, and events, and so just a little concerned in that regard. I know you'll do a great job, but that's my concern.
Thank you.
We'll see what happens.
And we always have the ability to change the rules we need to.
Okay. If we have no other questions? What do we need to do?
So if we can just have a motion and to request to streamline the process of permission to serve alcohol in Memorial Park, add council member Carr's request to have reports, summary reports of the applicants, once they're approved to the council.
So moved.
Do we not have any public comment? Apparently not, right?
Well, we can.
Okay. I didn't see anybody jumping up, just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Thanks for keeping them in line, Ken. So, so moved from Mr. Schaefer, we need a second.
Second.
And we're ready for you Suzanne.
Thank you. Matthews?
Yes.
Swenier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thanks for all your hard work Suzanne. That's going to keep you busy, I think, I really believe that. It's going to be just a great thing for our community, I can't wait. Can we put some more grass in, another couple weeks?
We are.
Aaron, twenty-sixth, this is. Okay, I have, nobody signed up for public comment, but as Mr. Matthews will remind me, this is the time, if anybody would like to come and say anything. Okay, we'll move on to reports. And we'll start with mayor's reports, and I have a list of a number of events. Saturday, April twenty-second, this coming Saturday, nine to noon, the Eighteenth Annual Kid Fest at the Ute Pass Cultural Center. This Sunday, from two to four, Woodland Park Wind Symphony presents the world of windcraft, that too at the Ute Pass Cultural Center. Then this coming Tuesday, from one thirty to four is the Teller County Job Fair, and that too is at the Ute Pass Cultural Center. And then beginning this coming Monday, and running through Friday, May twelfth, the twenty seventeen annual Johnny Jumpa Plant Sale at various locations in Teller County. And trying to think if I have anything else, I don't believe I do. Carol? Mr. Carr?
We talked about the parks and rec, I'll just add to it, we had extensive discussion about the implications on certain aspects, certain things like the, well, the crews, among other things. So it's quite a complicated structure, but it, it, it seems workable, the advisory board went straight through with it. I also have announcements on some events happening in Woodland Park coming up this summer. The Ute Pass Saddle Club is going to use Woodland Park quite extensively, and they're going to have barrel racing on June seventeenth, July fifteenth, and this is official pro rodeo stuff. They're going to also, July seventh, eighth, and ninth, they're having a, a big rodeo down at the Saddle Club. A rodeo on July twenty-ninth, another barrel racing final in Woodland Park, which is going to be throughout Teller County, but it's going to be located here in Woodland Park on September ninth. September sixteenth and seventeenth, they're going to do sort of a lumberjack thing with log days. And then they're going to have a musical event, which is really where I was headed with this, Cowboys with Culture event on the twenty-nine thirtieth of September and October first. The Main Street, and that's it for the rodeos, Main Street, we now have a visioning statement, so we're actually starting to see some acceleration in progress on Main Street, and some interesting aspects that, we have, we have some checkmarks on the to-do list, is what I want to say, but we have, we actually have a, a visioning statement. The consultant who was hired to do, to assist us with that, has come up with our Mountain Western vision, and a, a bunch of us on the board, or not on the board, or whatever, the whole room full of people was helpful in constructing a visioning statement. Several of us in the room were, were there. And we're moving on to the consultant summarizing it with pictorial architectural aspects coming up soon. And so there's, we, we, we have some Main Street checkmarks. That's it.
Are you going to give us a report on the Verk meeting?
Yeah, as soon as I get a summary, I'll probably bring a hand up, as a matter of fact.
John, do you have anything that you can provide to us on the Verk meeting that occurred?
Oh, Verk, I'm sorry, I didn't see. Yes, I, we're, we're moving along, we're getting, we've got our first sets of data, we're constructing data analysis spreadsheets without analysis tools at this point, but we're constructing, we're, we're focusing in on the collection of the data, and we're pretty happy with the data. We, we had a meeting earlier this week, and we, the, the committee members were pretty happy with what we've got as our, as our pared-down vehicles that we're looking at. And the data is coming in very strongly from, from the staff.
I understand that there's a request for the staff to take pictures of the vehicles and open toolboxes, what is the purpose in that?
Well, we, we're, I'm not sure it's the staff or the cooperation with the staff, we're, we're trying to get a whole portfolio of all the vehicles, so, and we're looking at the data sheets, we actually know what kind of vehicle we're looking at. A lot of that was done in preparation for the budget, so it's just, probably half of it's already done last year, we're just finishing up. So we're going to have basically a folder that, that shows what kind of vehicle we're looking at, as opposed to, it's VW bug, it's a massive dump, whatever.
What would be the purpose in taking pictures of open toolboxes?
Well, then we know what kind of tools are there.
For what purpose?
For, exactly, for what purpose.
And then, at what point will you take the data that's collected and apply some metric of efficiency and cost saving?
Well, certainly not this early, but I would expect by late summer.
And what would be that metric? How will you measure cost efficiency or cost saving?
The committee is working on those aspects as we speak.
Are you aware of the cost to the staff in terms of hourly wages up to this point?
That is not one of the metrics that we're measuring, but.
Well, I do for March. In March, our deputy clerk's time spent on compiling data was over six hundred dollars. For various operators, vehicle operators, it was five hundred dollars, and that was just in March. That does not include the time that David Butterie spent supporting the committee as well. In your request to have the staff support or assist in taking pictures of each vehicle and every open toolbox, that task will involve four department heads, seven division chiefs, twenty-one operators, and who knows how much time it will take. And then more importantly is, with every request made to the staff of this type, we begin to erode the staff's trust in us, as well as the rest of the employees on the city, city employees. For that reason, I'm going to ask right now for the council to vote on a resolution to dissolve the committee at the next council meeting.
The, the pictures and the, the inventory completion has been directly assigned to the volunteer staff. So it's not going to affect the council, or the staff, except for David having to make arrangements and, and site that it's basically.
I'm.
And mostly after hours, maybe with one person there.
I'm still making the motion to ask for a resolution to be prepared by the staff to dissolve the committee.
And I'll second that. Other discussion? The reason I'm, the reason I'm seconding it is I, I didn't believe in it to begin with, I don't think you'd go to the extent we're talking about doing unless you have a problem. I do, I'm not aware of any problem. If there was a problem, the first step would be to go to staff and the, the city and ask that it be resolved and have the, the input presented back to us. And then if we're not happy with what's presented, then maybe you get into a committee like this. At this point, as Carl has pointed out, I think it's, I'll call it a waste of time or make work, whatever you want to call it, and it's expensive, and we don't need to be doing that this year especially.
We keep rehashing this, we, we've given a charter to have a certain amount of time, we haven't been given enough time to do anything much yet, and it's pretty much not fair to just cut off a committee without any opportunity to proceed, especially at this early aspect. I do find it interesting that there's a lot of statistics and things that have been prepared.
I asked for them.
Okay. And, and, and all those objections have been noted before in previous meetings, we went through all this before. We seem to revisit, be revisiting aspects that we voted on in past meetings. We had a whole session about this with Tammy Tanue, about not doing that, and we seem to continue to do that. I would ask that we not persist in revisiting old things, otherwise there's a lot of other people at this desk that could revisit a lot of other things. Now, it certainly was passed as a resolution to continue through January, when it's going to be dissolved of its natural fruition, but at, at one month in, there is, there's just no possible conclusions that can be done from this study. And it's not, the, the things you mentioned that you perceived as impacting really aren't going to be impacting, because they're going to be done by the volunteers, not the staff.
Val, my issue has always been, and will continue to be, and I'll, I'll support Carol and Ken, and whoever else will support this, I don't have any metric or way to analyze this that you brought forward to me. I see a, a book that's this thick, that's cost us thousands of dollars already, and you can't tell me if we're doing anything right or wrong? We got to wait till the end of the summer? I don't get it.
If you, if you want some conclusions right now, we see many vehicles that are hardly utilized.
Well, you know, you can say that, I can say something.
I understand that, and, and, and it's not appropriate to make a final conclusion based on this small subset. Everybody who's an engineer up here, among the city manager, myself, a lot of people up here, know that this, that's inappropriate way to do an analysis.
And I would argue that you don't do analysis without a metric to start with, because what is the analysis going to tell you? And once you get the analysis, you don't make the metric to match the analysis, it's the other way around. Show me what you want first, and then show me where our deficiencies are.
So.
You haven't done that.
Yes, we did do that. We did it precisely with a bunch of hypotheses and scenarios that will be tested as soon as we get sufficient data.
And you see the issue, the cost?
Yeah, I understand you, Carol, and Ken, and others might be against this, but we set in motion a procedure and a committee to do this.
We set a motion, but, you know, you can set a motion and you can, you can change that, because people change their mind. You know, I'm not saying, I, I just, I would love to see us save money somehow, if possible, with our vehicles. I'm, I'm a big proponent of that. I don't like this process at all. I think these are the people, to me, the staff is the, is the group that should handle it. And, and that's what I've always believed, that's why I didn't vote for it in the first place. I've come to a couple meetings, and I honestly, I just still have the same issues. We spent a bunch of money, staff has gone out of their way, we've got a lot, we've got a lot of information right now, and you tell me we're going to have to spend more and more and more to the end of the summer, I, I, it's hard for me to support that.
Let's, let's back up a step here for a moment. We have one month's worth of data. From that, what can we tell you? We can tell you what vehicle number X has been used during that time. For example, as I looked at the data, and, and we're seeing, beginning of trip, end of trip, to the minute, is that vehicle fifty-eight was used forty-four percent of the time it was available during, during a normal workday for the month. Forty-four percent. That, that, that's, that's a piece of data, yeah.
That is, that's for this month, for this year, John. How long do we have to take that? What if it's eighty percent next, next month? And what if it's twenty-two percent the month after? That's my question. How long do you go with this? And your forty-four percent, I get it, doesn't sound like much. What's the number? We need seventy-five percent? We need fifty? We need twenty-five? Where's that number? So if I had some metric like that, then I could say to myself, well, it's only been used forty-four percent of the time, maybe that doesn't make sense, but maybe next month it's used more. So you see where I'm going? It looks like a lot of expense, and I still don't know what we're going to apply to make any sense.
Well, and I haven't, you know, I assume that Carol's getting data from the right people who are actually filling out these forms. David, you know, we voiced some concerns early on, and David hasn't commented negatively recently, so I'm surprised by your numbers, frankly.
Well, I, you know, the numbers are, are guesstimates for the month of March, and if every month, some percentage of the deputy clerk's time is spent helping to compile this data, and it's six hundred dollars' worth of her time every month until January, that is not an expense I'm willing to continue.
I can understand that, and frankly, I'm surprised by that number.
I don't have any reason to doubt it, but even if it were a hundred dollars every month until January. I, I feel somewhat responsible for having encouraged the use of the committee to make this type of analysis. I am not an engineer, but I do have a, a degree in strategic analysis. And data collection should not take this long, nor should it have such an impact on the staff's operations, and I've always said that. When we got to the point that it was impacting staff operations, and in my mind it is, I don't know who this group of volunteers is that's going to take pictures of, of the vehicles, the vehicle dryers have to be there, someone has to give you access to the vehicles. So it's, it's more than impacting a group of volunteers. I don't think that this is going to provide a recommendation to the council in time for this year's, for next year's budget, number one. And number two, that you have any way to measure, is forty-four percent of the time a vehicle is used acceptable, or is eighty-eight percent? No, never has anyone said that this is the way we're going to judge this in the end. Data collection is absolutely the most important first step, but this committee has been in place since it's, since we passed the resolution in January. When, when are we going to see results?
We had our first meeting in February, I believe, we have one month's of data now.
I, I, I think my, my point's made, if the council would agree to have a resolution come forward and. If the council would agree to have a resolution come forward in two weeks, fine. If the council says no, let them have more time, fine. But I'm making the request now for the staff to prepare a resolution to dissolve the committee.
And I did second that. And I will reiterate again, because I voted against it originally. Why are we doing this? What's the problem that caused this whole thing to start? I have a problem with that. David presented us a lot of information before. I don't see what's generated this from the very beginning. I'm sorry.
But as the council, we approved the resolution and the establishment of the committee. Certainly, we, we're having this discussion and we can have a vote on it if that's what my colleagues want.
I've called for the question.
Yeah. I, I would suggest that you give us another month. By the way, the, the sheets are put in a basket, they're handed over to us. If that takes six hundred dollars' worth of effort, I want that job. There's nothing being done, or should necessarily by the committee. The committee hasn't asked anything other than collect the sheets, hand them to us.
They got to fill out the sheets.
That's about four minutes at the most.
No, the operator, the operator fills out the sheet.
Yeah.
And when it's done, it's done, and we're supposed to get it. So the deputy clerk, I don't know how she was investing the time, and it equates to six hundred dollars, frankly.
Because there's zero time. You're collecting sheets, hand them over to the committee, boom, takes twenty seconds. That's not six hundred dollars. If it is, I want that job. I would ask that, Councilman Harvey has, has asked a question. I would, I would say two weeks is not enough. Give us to, end of May at least, so we get another month's worth of data. And we can have a more intelligent, we've been ambushed on this right now. Otherwise, I'd have all this information in front of me, but I have none of it in front of me right today.
The vote will come in two weeks if we decide to ask the staff to prepare the resolution.
Does the council have to agree to ask the staff to prepare the resolution?
Sure. Yeah, it should be, excuse me, it should be a council consensus to direct us to do that, but the final vote won't be until the first meeting.
Right. I'd like to hear from Noel or Paul. Do you have, everyone else has weighed in.
I felt there was a better way to go about this. John brought up an interesting point with forty-four percent of usage of the vehicle. Carol and Neil and I and Ken feel that there's, there's no baseline. So if a vehicle's not being used seventy-five percent of the time, do you take it out of service? See, we haven't even created those baseline metrics to match the data to. And that's the concern here. So if a vehicle's not being used ninety percent of the time, well, to me, that's a no-brainer. You take it out of service, but that would just be common sense.
What if it's a snowplow?
Right, so you're exactly right. A snowplow's going to be, we had a very simple winter. We had, what, three storms? So that snowplow's being used five percent of the time through the year?
We don't include snowplows.
You don't? Okay.
By the way, there are, there are vehicles that are used less than ten percent.
You create the baseline, then you grab the metrics and match it up. You don't get the met, the data and then go, okay, let's make up the baselines. See, that's the concern. We don't know what the baselines are. And that's, that's why I felt there was a different way around this, and we discussed that in length prior. But this will, this will give you two weeks to...
I won't be at the next meeting, and I don't think it's fair.
Oh.
I don't think it's fair on a lot of aspects, but that certainly doesn't make it fair.
Well, this, this will give you two weeks to, you can at least email your, your rebuttal, I guess, or your, your, what am I looking for?
Display.
Your arguments to say why we should keep this.
And to me, there's a more overarching issue here, and that is the staff's perception that we as a council don't trust them. That's more important than anything.
I know at my job, at my job, they say, okay, you need to hit these, these metrics here, okay? And then they collect the data. They don't collect the data and say, oh, you should have hit here. It's, it's after the fact. We don't know what we're trying to hit. I don't know how many databases I need to fix because they're not telling me what I need to fix. If they tell me what I need to fix, then I can focus on getting to there. So see what I'm, it's backwards.
There seems to be misunderstanding on what we're doing. We're gathering data for those baselines.
Right, you have two weeks now. You can email all us, the council, with your...
We don't, we, we have one month's worth of data, actual data, and it's for March. March is different than June, July, August, all those. And that particular vehicle that John mentioned will change in characteristic over time.
What is the baseline? What is the...
That will be the baseline, all those months put together.
That's, that's what I'm getting at. First, before you even collect all the data, say, okay, if this vehicle in six months is not being used ninety percent of the time, this is probably the vehicle we will take out of service. We don't have that. We have nothing. We have data, but nothing to match it to, or nothing to compare it to.
And only one month's data.
You keep going back to the data. Stop. You got to start out with the baseline. What is the trigger point to remove the vehicle from service? Do you even know that?
We will present in the end a, a report to council, and council will decide what that threshold is.
What are the trigger points? That's what we want.
That's right.
If you have the trigger points before you get the data, I, I would go with it. Right now, we don't know if vehicles, we don't know, we don't have those trigger points to remove a vehicle from service.
So say you have two vehicles used at forty percent.
Okay.
That naturally speaks to, oh, and they're in the same department. Oh, well, we only need one vehicle because half the time it's used here, and this vehicle, we can eliminate one vehicle, right?
Unless they're used at the same time.
Okay, well, I have five cars, so, and two drivers, so I know what forty percent usage is, and so I'm okay with having five cars.
Unless Paul has something to add, I'd call for the question.
I'd like to hear from Paul if he has something to add.
I wasn't prepared for this, but I'm going to say how I would look at the vehicle usage, and I was hoping would reveal some evidence, all to take home after hours, the mileage is put on it, the cost of the gas, and, and the wear and tear on the vehicle by having those privileges of taking vehicles home. What is the actual cost to the city? I can't follow these lines of forty percent this and that and this. I honestly thought it was going to, and I still hope that it will reveal where monies can be saved or are, are the vehicles being used to the best that they can be used in the way that they are being used during work hours and when the vehicles are being used after workouts. That's all I can add to this. I don't know what that question is. I don't know if there's money to be saved there, but I would be looking for savings and realistically looking at that, I can't tell by usage of vehicles what they're doing and the amount that they're used at. I'm looking for cost savings, not to aggravate, irritate, or lay claim to anything. That's how I would look at it. Common sense, are the vehicles being used correctly, and what's the burden of using that vehicle on in twelve hours?
So Paul, answer me this question then.
Okay, I'll try.
You have the city manager who's been doing this for the last ten years, or do we have a couple of people on city council that have been here six, eight, ten months, a year, two years, three years, whatever? It's not their job, in my opinion. Why don't we ask the city manager to do his job and say, we think perhaps that we're overutili, we're underutilizing our vehicles. Can you look into that? That's just the way I approach things as opposed to, to this. Doesn't that, does that not make sense to you, Paul?
I approach things of looking at what are the obligations of a worker who is using a vehicle that the public, the citizens pay for?
Right.
Are they abusing them? Are they taking them home? Are they putting an extra gas mileage on them, mileage on them, abuse on them? Or are they not? It's just correct.
Is that the city manager's job? That's all I'm, is that the council's job?
No.
Or is that the city manager's job?
It's not the council's job.
Hold it, hold it, please, give me a chance. I thought the council, it was voted by the people, and I was told that I'm David's boss, Mr. Butterby, and I don't agree with that, but I can understand. I'd rather look at it as a committee working together and that each buddy, each person has an obligation to fill. I'm trying to fill my obligations to the citizens of Woodland Park. That's all I'm trying to do, not to have an argument with you or with you. And we can disagree on our methodologies, on how we think through things. And I was just trying to add something very constructive where I thought savings may be worth capturing. That's all I'm saying.
No, I agree.
As far as a study and statistics and graphs and all of that, forget it. When you're talking to me, you could take that and forget it. I'm looking for actual cost savings. Are the vehicles being used correctly? And are they being signed correctly? That's all. I have nothing else to say.
I don't think we have a problem with that. I think we asked, the problem, I think, here, in my opinion, is the first step is not to create this committee, is to ask the staff, to ask David, we have a problem or we have a question, are we getting full utilization out of our vehicles? I mean, where do we end this? Are we going to start exploring every aspect of the city and the staff? Of course not. That's not our role. Let's ask them. If they don't do the job, then we can come back and form a committee to dig into it. Let's not slap them in the face and say, tell us all this information, even though you haven't had a problem. That's ridiculous.
And that, and I brought that up when we were talking about this committee originally, that it was a slippery slope. We're going to go ahead and monitor the vehicles, what's next? We're going to monitor what Suzanne does. We're going to follow what the chief does. We're going to get in Sally's office and sit in the corner and document what she does all day? It's a slippery slope. And so it's not our job to manage. That's, that's Dave's job. Our job is to look at the information and, and any decisions, big decisions that Dave brings to us or the city brings to us is we make decisions whether he should go forward or not on them.
And, and that is the model of our, our city's government?
Correct, absolutely. Simple as it can get.
Paul, the question?
Have, have we forgotten why we're even having this discussion? It had to do with a small reserve on this year's budget. We were looking for potential savings. We thought, as a council, that there may be some payback or cost savings if we analyze the city vehicle fleet, not the heavy equipment, and we exclude the police department from these discussions. Yes, David, has he been doing it well? Yes. Will he continue to do it? He'll say yes, because we've heard it. On the other hand, let's not forget why we said we want this committee put together and the fact that we don't have a baseline. That's why we're collecting data now. And we have one month's worth of data, and we've seen that some vehicles are being used less than fifty percent of the time. Is there money to be found there? I don't know. We don't have enough data. Now, the council can say, well, it's not a good idea now. Some of you said it wasn't a good idea at the time, but the council approved the resolution. So you're going to give us the time we need to do the job? Or you're going to say, no, we don't like it because city staff is investing too much time in filling out these sheets? And I just don't understand that at all.
Ken, Ken's called the question. I'm, I'm the one who initiated the discussion, and I agree with everything you just said, John. I was the deciding goat. I was the forward councilman who, who caused the, the committee to be formed. And I have felt all along that there was no end in sight. There was no methodology except for data collection and hoping that you would get committee members who had more experience.
Well, we have some who have some experience.
You have two committee members. You should have had four. I guess it's, it's kind of a daunting task for a volunteer to, to step up to, and I realize that.
Yes.
But data collection at this expense every month is not worth it to me.
Well, I would like to be able to confirm that these are the expenses that you've talked about, and I would like for someone to confirm that in a way that I can understand.
And we can do that before the next meeting?
Yeah. But if we talk about doing something in two weeks at the next meeting, we're not going to have any more data. At best, two weeks worth.
Well, you'll have the information you're asking for from David in terms of what it's going to cost us, that's all.
Yes.
There's been a call for the question. Suzanne?
I would move to amend, to move it two more weeks down, so I have a fair opportunity to be here to discuss it at the time. It seems only fair to me. I've given notice that I'm not going to be here. I can't be here. I'm out of town.
I have no issue with that myself. Does anybody else?
I, I believe Councilman Carr should be here.
Absolutely.
Yes.
You know, again, sometimes these things are hard, they're uncomfortable. We're trying to do what's best. We all have our own individual beliefs. We can change our mind. Things change in this world. And, and so, you know, we'll, we'll move forward, we'll do the best we can. This gives four weeks. There might be more information. You all may work extremely hard, come up with some metrics that make some sense that might change some people's minds. But now we have a call for a question with you.
Carol, do you accept the amendment?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to repeat back what the question and motion were. So we have, the original motion was by Councilmember Harvey asking the city staff to prepare a resolution to dissolve the VERC commi, committee, with Councilmember Carr adding the addition for it to be brought to the council when he is present, which would be at the May eighteenth council meeting.
We have a second for that?
We have a second from Councilmember Car, Harvey. Matthews, excuse me.
Okay, Suzanne.
Thank you. Sonier?
Yeah.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six one.
Thank you. Move on, Ken?
Yes, I'd like to change the topic to a little more fun topic, I guess you would say. Keep Woodland Park Beautiful is partnering or hosting with Friends of the Forest for the annual cleanup, May twentieth. And I'll read right from the flyer that you may see around town. Anybody and everybody to show up Saturday, nine AM. It's at the Cultural Center for coffee and donuts, your instructions and gear. Take, take off with your group and clean your assigned area. Come back around noon to enjoy a free lunch and cookout, prizes, and fun. So please get involved. And I would just add to that, this is a great event once a year, but there's so many of us that hike all over this area, including the National Forest. If you see litter while you're hiking, if you can, if it's not too big, pick it up. Let's keep it clean throughout the year. Thank you.
Ken, I'm sorry, the date again?
May twentieth.
Thank you.
Saturday.
Thanks for, the volunteers. It's deeply appreciated. It takes a lot to volunteer on any of the committees associated with this city. I want to thank for the audience participation, vote at home, and who are here tonight. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Noel?
I was going to do a little DDA information. I think the, the last discussion kind of overshadowed that, so I'll just bring it up next time.
John?
Nothing.
Okay, the city attorney's not here tonight. The city manager?
Jane's going to give us an update, and I have a few more to add after that.
Very quickly, one other event that did not make it onto the mayor's list, on Saturday, electronics recycling at the middle school. Don't put that stuff in the, in the landfill, get it over to the middle school to recycle. The vision meeting for Main Street is, the community meeting is tentatively scheduled for May tenth, so put that on your calendar. We can discuss the vision statement for, for Main Street. Main Street also hosted a, a successful seminar on the Colorado Streets Guide. I know that Councilman Sonier and Councilman Carr were both able to attend that. Well-attended event. I think it went really well. We're working quite a bit on the Bronco seven K on May sixth. Don't forget about that. The Broncos are sending out notices to property owners on the race route, as well as property owners that will be impacted by the road closure, so they're sending out about eight hundred notices to citizens. Start seeing those pretty soon. Last count, we had about three hundred and fifty registrations. You can register online to run. Volunteers are also still needed. Volunteers get a T-shirt, so they need horse marshals. Jane, they have to register online as well, correct? Correct, yes. Volunteers register online as well. We did attend a pre-construction meeting with CDOT regarding road... We did attend a pre-construction meeting with CDOT regarding road work this summer. They are going to be doing an inch and a half overlay on Highway sixty-seven from about Kelly's Road up to West Creek. Brings it a little bit further into town than we thought initially. Work on that June through October, Monday through Friday. That work, they may be doing on weekends as well, as they're getting that done. Once the contractor publishes, publishes a schedule, we'll be sure to get that out to everybody so they know. There'll also be weekly updates published on that. They're also doing some work on Highway sixty-seven to Cripple Creek. That's going to be much more impactful to, to the traveling public, so just so people know they can get those updates.
Before Jane leaves that subject council, that's different news than what you heard at our Goals and Objectives session. That's because Jane was at that meeting with CDOT while we were meeting. So what we heard at that meeting was vastly different than what we heard prior for that project. It does look like they're going to do the inch and a half overlay from Kelly's all the way to the city limit, you know, by Lucky Lady, and then further to the north. The discussion I'm going to have with the project engineer is what, how does that incorporate drainage? What they've told us initially is that's a separate project, but they are concurrently looking for money to make those improvements as well. Remember that the master plan calls for widening to four lanes between Evergreen Heights Drive County Road, the signal light, to Kelly's Road. Not sure that that will happen, but it certainly looks like we'll get a smoother surface and maybe some drainage improvements. More to follow on that.
That's good news. Thank you, Jane.
They did indicate that they owe Councilman Sonier a phone call about that. Just so you know.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I also brought up at Goals and Objectives, when we had that Main Street meeting and hosted the visitors, that it was very difficult that some of the crosswalks parallel to twenty-four on the asphalt, many holes, many potholes, many core drill holes, and uneven surfaces that I thought needed to be addressed because of safety concerns to pedestrians. I don't know if you noticed that when you went out onto the street walking, but it was very obvious. And then I went and walked downtown, not this week, last week, and revisited and took pictures of it, and yes, I did see what I saw. I would like to see some movement towards correcting those situations. I, I just figured I'd put it out there since we're talking about roads.
I'll just add to that, I think at the last CML or two CMLs, we talked to the mayor of Manitou. Have you driven through Manitou? And how bad their roads are? They're having the same issue with CDOT.
And Manitou gets lots of money.
Well, that's Manitou, that has nothing to do with CDOT.
Then they tear it up, then they bring it back, so...
Well, they're having the same issue we are. And we are just a little bit on the map compared to all the other cities in Colorado.
No, we're not. We are Woodland Park. We are a great city, a great community, and we deserve to give the citizens of Woodland Park the safety of crosswalks in our city.
Agreed.
They are entitled to that.
Your, your voice gets drowned out by all the other cities asking for the same thing, so your voice has to be louder.
We're, we're Woodland Park, and we can make the opportunities to repair those.
I, I hope that it happens.
How many people, may I ask you this one question? I wasn't going to ask this. Have anybody fallen on the street this year from the beginning of the year, don't even go into last year, to right now, and, and complained or anything? Has anybody fallen on these streets?
You, you did ask that at the Goals and Objectives.
No, I didn't. I asked that the street to be repaired. I didn't know if anybody did.
I'm not aware of anyone. I don't know there have been any reports. Have there been some that have happened? Very possibly, but none that have been reported to us that I'm aware of.
I am very glad to hear that. I would just like to avoid that happening. That's all I'm saying.
Me, too. Understand.
That's all I'm saying. Thank you very much.
What else, Jane?
The last thing I have is one plug. Hopefully, you all have seen the Parks and Rec guide, but we are planning, as a, at the discussion of Memorial Park, opening June fourteenth.
Right.
In the evening event for that. So make sure you get that on your calendars. We're starting to do planning for that, so hope to see y'all back.
Question? On the inch and a half overlay, Kelly's Road, what was the northern?
West Creek.
West Creek? Wow.
So, yeah, it goes almost to Douglas County.
Yeah, okay. All right. And it was only going to be from Painted Ponyo, correct, to start with?
No, initially, it was Lucky Lady.
Oh, excuse me.
So it was right at the north end of our city limits, and now they're bringing it further south.
Good for us.
It is.
Thank you, Jane.
Sally?
Thank you. I will be distributing a memo to all of you with respect to a recent application that we received on Monday. This application is a permitted use for review of the Natural Grocers facility on the property that was just included into the DDA. It's a thirteen thousand square foot building, and in our permitted use administrative review, there's a requirement to notify council and allow you to be able to know that this has been submitted, as well as as an individual, not as a council, but as an individual, you can make comments, as well as the general public. The property will be posted. There is a fifteen-day period for comments, and those will be due by May fifth. So I'll hand these out after the meeting.
Thank you, Sally.
Thanks, Sally. Chief?
Thank you, David. Tonight was our second annual Kids and Cops four-twenty dodgeball event. It was a pretty cool event. We included the Cripple Creek School District, so it was Cripple Creek, and the Woodland Park School, so we included all the kids within the county. Had a great turnout. As luck would have it, just before four-twenty, the power went out in three counties to include ours. However, our fire department pulled through. They pulled out the, the backup lights and were able to illuminate the gym well enough until the lights came back on, so we kept on playing. And it's just a positive alternative on, on a great day, and it gives the kids something, something different to do other than what other folks are doing out there. We were able to provide a lot of free stuff for the kids, free food, free drinks, raffle prizes, as well as some T-shirts. Probably the coolest thing is we had kids from three years all the way up to eighteen years out there playing, and the little toddler that was running out there was always the last one to get tagged out of the team. It was just great sportsmanship. So had a lot of great sponsors, and overall, it was just a really good time. So it was a great event. Looking forward to it next year, and a lot of thanks to Heidi Troxel and the Marijuana Tax Revenue Program, working together.
I think council and the community knows that I'm very proud of our staff and the professional level that they, they've all achieved in their respective career paths. Council's also very well that we have, very aware that we have a great relationship with